I'd like to call the order, the May second, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Switzer, would you lead us in the pledge? Okay, let me get caught up here. Okay, so we have a full board tonight, so we've got a quorum. Pledge is done, so we're gonna take item C and move it down on the agenda. Between items E and F, pending some authorization from the town attorney. So I'm gonna take care of that right now. Alright, so we're gonna go straight to item D, the consent calendar. Which is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting is, everybody, has everybody had a chance to take a look at those? Right, any questions?
I make a motion except the consent calendar is printed.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item D is done. Okay, so we're gonna come to item E, E one, which is PP dash two zero, two three dash zero one. This is a request by Jay Bates on behalf of Wright Homes LLC to subdivide approximately twenty acres of land. Into fifteen one acre lots for the homestead preliminary plat. Property is located at the northeast corner of West Road Three South and South Road One West in Chino. Has anybody on the commission spoken to anybody about this? Okay. Hi Bethan.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners, Bethan Hain, Associate Planner. Tonight, the item before you is a request for a preliminary plat for the homestead preliminary plat. Located at the northeast of the intersection of West Road Three South and South Road One West. The applicant is in attendance tonight. So the twenty acre subject property is located at the northeast of the intersection of West Road Three South and South Road One West. The property is also located south of an existing slaughterhouse. So the subject property recently went through the rezon process back in January. From agricultural residential five acre minimum to single family residential one acre minimum. Now, the rezon request was approved by town council by a five to two vote. Now, the surrounding area is AR five with Yavapai County jurisdiction to the west. And multiple family residential and mobile home park directly north to the site. So the applicant is requesting a preliminary plat for a fifteen lot, one acre subdivision. And in front of you is the proposed configuration for the proposed homestead subdivision. The applicant is intending to serve the properties with well and septic. Now, a neighborhood meeting was held on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three regarding the preliminary plat. Two neighbors and three community members were in attendance. Topics of concern included whether the applicant intended to be on well and septic versus water and sewer. Traffic concerns manufactured or stick-built homes. And if there would be an HOA for the subdivision as well as drainage management. So as noted before, there is a slaughterhouse located to the north of the subject property. And as a result of that, staff has required at this preliminary plat stage. That the applicant should include on the front, front page of the plat, an odor disclaimer. And that the developer must supply buyers with a noise and odor disclosure acknowledgement to sign. To date, staff has received one letter of opposition that is contained within your packet. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to town council a recommendation of approval. Here are the conditions of approval.
So does anybody have questions for the town staff while they're up there?
That was the project that Planning and Zoning.
Correct.
Did not vote to approve.
Yes.
Five, four to three.
That is correct.
Any questions? Alright, thank you, we may call you back up. So the applicant is here, would you like to step up and speak? Please state your name.
Jay Bates with Wright Homes. Chairman Commissioners. The project is, like I said, fifteen lots would be manufactured homes. At this point in time, we have received a assured water supply certificate from the state. And we have the CCNRs that are recorded, limiting the water usage to a lesser amount. So that's already transpired and been approved. Any questions?
Anybody have questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna open the public portion of the meeting. If you choose to speak, I'll call on you, you can step up to the microphone. You have three minutes to speak and.
You're good, I'm just changing the slide here.
Alright, you have the opportunity to speak about this subject, this item only at this point in time in the meeting. Would anybody like to step up to the microphone, yes ma'am?
Good evening, I just wanted to say that I don't quite understand how you guys could make a recommendation. To disprove this when the committee then overturns you is. Is, it's just, you know, there's so much going on on One West, I don't know if you are familiar with it. You got the school going on on One West that is causing a detour on that end. The middle of One West, there's a proposition for a couple houses to be built there. And then you have this big project. You know, how are we gonna even maneuver getting out, going shopping, going to work or doing anything when you've got us all pinned in at the same time? Maybe the housing could wait until the schools finished with theirs. It's just seems like you've got One West and you've got everything going on there. And you have the whole of Chino Valley to do things with. So I just, you know, we're property owners, we pay taxes. It just seems that we should have some kind of consideration in all of this that's going on. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you ma'am. Did we get her name? Anybody else like to step up? Yes ma'am.
Chair Commissioners, my name is Rachel Purno, I'm an alternate commissioner. I have a couple of concerns about this project. From a real estate perspective, quite honestly, I think the disclosure of noise and smell is not a sales point. So Jay, I think you should really reconsider your proximity to the slaughterhouse. I hate to see this approved and then these manufactured homes just sit and not sell. Additionally, I'm wondering about what infrastructure has been required from Frank's perspective on this and how that will be maintained. Considering that this is technically a subdivision. And I think that prior, there was a lot of questions brought up about the traffic, about the water use and those types of things. But as I see many of these projects coming in, particularly from this developer. I really sit here and ask myself, how does this benefit the town of Chino Valley? A lot of these projects seem very capitalistic. And I would like to see when we have these things happen, more to offer the community. So maybe there's a park in there with a child's play center. Things like that or offering additional improvement to the area. Instead of just subdividing and putting manufactured homes in and selling them for half a million dollars, which is just not. Attainable and affordable housing for most people in this community. If we could at least offer something as part of this to dress it up. So I'm really anxious to know about what the requirements are gonna be as far as curb gutter pavement and landscape. I've seen a couple of the projects and although the manufactured homes are put on foundations and have small patios. I really would like to see them look a little bit nicer so we can establish more of a neighborhood feel instead of a. You know, mass building production subdivision where we just see house, 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 house. So those are a few of my concerns related to this specific project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes sir. Please state your name when you step up to the mic.
My name is Jim Holt, thank you Chairman, thank you Commissioners. I've been assisting Wright Homes with this project and I can address some of the water issues. I'm a water consultant, I had about twenty-five years' experience with the Arizona Department of Water Resources. So we did recognize that this is an area of town where water supply is not as abundant as other areas. So in the CCNRs, we did make some specific requirements for conservation of water. The landscape that's allowed on each lot is only within a ten thousand square foot envelope around the building site. So that leaves about three quarters of the acre lot that will have to be in natural vegetation. The landscape that would be allowed would only be that, those landscape materials that are on the Department of Water Resources. Low water use drought tolerant plant list. So those two things allowed us to restrict water demand for this project significantly. So the Arizona Department of Water Resources approval for the Assured Water Supply Certificate. Was based on those water conservation specifications. So I hope that's a little bit helpful. I think that the previous speaker was also mentioning water quality. We did do a test well at the site and we did a water quality analysis. We looked at a hundred and twenty-two constituents of the water. And we did have a very minor overage of arsenic. As you recall, the arsenic limit is ten parts per billion. And the arsenic at the test well at this site was eleven parts per billion. So we've indicated in the CCNRs that each well that we drill for each lot will be tested. And if there is an overage of arsenic, then we will install a whole house filtration system for each one of those lots. The town water consultant also suggested that we expand that investigation for. Six or seven constituents of water quality that I don't have memorized. That are related to FHA and VA approval. And so we will investigate those constituents as well. And we'll do filtration systems for them if there's any overage. So we've tried to address some of the issues that were, were mentioned.
Thank you sir, we'll call you back up maybe.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, seeing as how nobody else wants to speak up, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting for this item. Okay, so do we have any questions for staff based on the public comments?
Quick question, regarding what B was stating. When is this project to be started? Will it be in conflict with what's going on currently with the, with the?
So that would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, anything else?
I just had a question, I know it's not in town limits, but the property directly to the east, which is in the county. What is that zone?
So are you referring to this area right here? So it is zoned.
I'm sorry, to the west.
To the west, so I believe it's, I think their nomenclature for it is RC U two. Which is the equivalent to our single family residential two acre minimum.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for staff? Thank you. Okay, so would the applicant please come up and respond to the public comments?
Yes, I'm not sure where the pricing came from, five hundred thousand, we haven't set any prices on these, on this development whatsoever at this point. We do, we do, on every house, it's, it's our signature, we do a ten by twelve porch in the high, in the front of the houses. And typically a twelve to fifteen by twenty-five patio on the back of the houses. That's our standard, we've been doing that for six and a half years. So we do a lot of things, we do two by six construction, our houses are upgraded significantly. I don't know if you remember before, but we had some pictures up a while back that illustrated what the houses are like inside. We try to, we try to make them where people can get in them and have, and have payments they can live with. And so we don't wanna have our houses sit either, I mean, that would be pretty ridiculous for us to put them in there. But currently, we're finishing a project on Salida del Sol, which is a forty acre subdivision, there's twenty-five lots over there. And this is the next, it's on the schedule for the next agenda, so it'll be going probably, hopefully in the fall. We'll move, we'll move directly from Salida over to Homestead.
So somewhere in the five to six month timeframe?
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna stop, so we'll get this all lined out and then we'll also proceed to another subdivision we've got going in Chino.
Alright, so there was some questions about landscaping. And then of course, your water representative kinda answered some of those things.
Yeah, we'll landscape the front on Road One, also the towns in the county, they want a turn lane. So we'll widen that portion of it, similar to Jim Fletcher's project on Road One East. Where you'll notice when, when his frontal area is actually back further from the center line of the street. It'll be similar to that, it'll be widened there. We're also dedicating forty-five feet on Road Three South. On the north side of the street, all the way down our property line, to our south property line. For the town of Chino Valley for later development of Road Three South.
Alright, anybody have any questions?
The ten thousand maximum landscaping, I understand that's for water concerns, but as far as aesthetics, I would consider that a big negative. You know, that's a pretty big lot, one acre, only ten thousand square feet, landscape the rest, natural. Chino's natural in a housing division is not gonna look good at all, that's, that would be a horrible look for that subdivision.
Well, I think if you drive around the town and you see a lot of one acre lots, that people typically don't landscape the whole one acre.
Correct.
They landscape around the house and then.
And they look horrible.
I guess it's a matter of opinion, depends on whose house it is. Some of them look pretty nice and some of them maybe don't.
Any questions?
I, I have one question. The cul-de-sac. Has the fire department commented as to turning radius so they can get in and?
Yes, absolutely, it'd be ninety-six feet. Yep, it's already been addressed and it will be paved.
Yeah, I, I see, plans say it's gonna be paved.
So your intent is to meet all of the town's landscaping requirements and to meet all of the applicable building codes?
Of course.
Zoning codes, et cetera?
Absolutely. We've done about seventy-five houses in Chino already. So we're pretty familiar with Chino Valley and the codes and what has to be done. If you get a chance or anybody wants to call me and, and let me know, I can give you. Some of those houses, you're welcome to go take a ride and look at them, they're pretty nice. I drive around all the time, I like seeing our houses, what people are doing with them. But I'd say ninety percent of them, they've landscaped, they've done a nice job, they look really nice. If you go down Salida del Sol and Bradshaw. We did eight houses in there, I was just there today because that's where our subdivision is. And all those, they're one acre lots. And the one, the first house has grass all around, he's put the kids stuff in the back and he's mowed it up and he's put a nice fence around it. The one next to that has put a lot of rock in the front. On the left-hand side, those three have pretty nice landscaping around those. If you turn the corner and there's three more, they look well kept, there's a big shop building, one guy built on the back half of his.
I mean, if you consider that, depending on your setback where you're putting the houses.
We typically.
If they can landscape from the front of the property, from the front of the home to the street with full width of the lot. That looks pretty good, cause then it's just backyard that is the natural. But then, if it's only ten thousand square feet maximum, that might not allow them to do any rear landscaping.
Well, they could do it, but just not use water for it, right?
Yeah, it could be rock, but limiting it to ten thousand period, that means they can't even do rock, right?
Is it, is it the ten thousand square, that's a good question.
That's landscaping.
Is the ten thousand square feet landscaping requirement for all landscaping or just water usage landscaping? Or has that been clarified?
Actually, I don't know if that's been clarified, but I would assume that it would be just water usage.
Would you have any problem?
Putting landscape rock in doesn't, I mean, it doesn't alter any kind of water usage.
Would you have, including that in your wordage?
No, not at all.
Cause I kind of agree, a whole back half of the property that isn't completely landscaped. Although most of my property is not landscaped, but it consists of a horse. Are there variable setbacks for the houses or are you planning on just kinda setting them all the same distance off the road?
We typically set them, try to set them the same so it looks uniform, but that's typically sixty to seventy feet back from the property line. So we don't put it, we don't put them up next to it, so it looks kinda, it gives us some, some area around it instead of just be front.
The front could easily over ten thousand.
It's pretty, pretty self-explanatory, I think, if you think of ten thousand feet for water usage. It would be that part of the landscaping would be the ten thousand.
And then if it's ten thousand square feet for water usage, that's a huge area for water usage, so. Both those are negatives, in my opinion.
Do you have any pre-sales?
No. We, in state of Arizona, we can't offer anything for sale unless we have a public report. And that public report has to come from Arizona Department of Real Estate.
You don't feel the slaughterhouse is gonna be a deterrent?
Pardon me?
You don't feel the slaughterhouse is gonna be a deterrent in selling some of the homes?
I don't think so, there's a lot of houses around there and the people don't seem to mind much. I mean, it's surrounded by one acre on the, on the east side and two acre lots on the west side. And some of those houses, a lot of those houses have sold multiple times and they still sell. So I don't think it's that much of a negative, to be honest. In fact, they put in, I think, three or four houses on Good Shepherd, which is the road that goes right down next to it.
It's on the screen.
And they sold them right away, so.
Yeah, those are ways away.
Most of those houses that are built across the street in the county weren't there when the, the Beefway Ranch has been there. For long as I've lived here, since nineteen seventy-nine, so I know none of those houses across the street were there then.
Right.
They got the prevailing wind advantage.
They do. I'm not gonna argue that one.
Wind in Chino?
Yeah, exactly. And you addressed some of the traffic concerns, the project is five to six months down the road, which may give everybody a chance to get their other things. Under motion and finished up, plus you're white, if I understood right, you're widening the road in front of your property, is that correct?
Correct, so it'll give them access and egress both.
Alright, anybody else have any more questions? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes sir.
Frank Marbury, town engineer, for the record. Do you mind if I clarify some of the?
We would love if you would clarify anything.
Okay, thank you. Just to make sure, what we've got in the, in the stipulations for, for right of way and construction. Along Road One West, we're asking for the half width of the street from center of the street. Towards Mr. Bates's development to be forty feet wide, that would represent an eighty foot total right of way section. And the same right of way requirement along a future corridor for Three South. And that's why I say future corridor, because construction requirements we're asking for is along for, One West only. Three South is just preservation of a corridor for a future street, so there'd be no construction there. As far as the turn lane goes, I don't know if it's required at this time, we would look towards a traffic study. So I just wanted the commission to be clear on that, that it's not required at this time, but if the traffic study determines that it needs it, we'll. We'll have it put in and there should be sufficient right of way width to put it in if needed.
So we are doing a traffic study on this project?
There should be at least a, a traffic statement done during the technical review period.
Of the, going through the town.
Yeah, there's.
Review process.
To be honest, from a traffic engineer's point of view, these aren't, it's not a large number of lots. When you're considering traffic, so it won't necessarily need to be a full-blown expensive study. But we'll at least can do a few quick calculations on turn lanes and get that documented.
And all the internal roads, just cause it came up, meet the requirements for school bus radiuses and fire truck radiuses, et cetera?
That is correct, the stipulation number. Seven is that the owner shall construct the, the roadway width is twenty-four feet, that's two twelve-foot lanes. Which should be able to pass two even military trucks. And then a five-foot paved shoulder on top of that with a thickened edge, that's a thicker triangle of asphalt to save the edges of the asphalt. So you'll actually have thirty-four feet of pavement out there, just no sidewalks or curb and gutter. Because this is maintaining that rural road section with, with what we would commonly say, bar ditches on the sides. And then the, the cul-de-sac shall have a minimum improved turning radius of forty-five, forty-eight feet. And that fits the turning radius for school buses and fire trucks. And that's just, just our town standard there, so it just meets our current town standards for a rural subdivision.
All the drainage, grading, stuff will all be designed by a civil engineer and approved through town permitting processes?
Correct, and that, that process will occur between the preliminary plat and the final plat.
Alright, thank you, anybody have questions for Mr. Marbury while he's up? Thank you for clarifying all of that.
And, and if I may, I do have one more note on this, far as modifying the landscaping notes. Just wanna caution that we don't wanna change any language that might go against what ADWR is requiring as far as a certificate of assured water supply. So didn't sound like anything would, would hurt that, but just wanna make sure we don't go against our state as far as that goes.
Did you guys catch that, the owner, did you catch all that? Okay, that's good advice, thank you. Alright. I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting for the, this part. Public comments has already been closed. So I am at the point where I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve preliminary PP two zero, two three dash zero one as presented, subject to the staff report. And information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval in attachment A.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, is there any discussion that we need to have before we vote? Alright, be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Matters?
No.
Commissioner Switzer?
No.
Commissioner Zamudio?
Yes.
Sorry. Vice Chair Pastiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes.
I apologize for the names.
That's why she voted no, you know. So at this point, because this vote is different from the first time it appeared on, again, before this commission. I'm gonna ask each board member to give a brief statement. I'm gonna ask each board member to give a brief statement as to why they voted the way they did.
My no vote was really based on my no vote for the zoning change for the same reasons. The property to the west, two acre minimum, and then it's surrounded on the west and south by, uh, AR five. The feed plant to the north, I think it's the wrong spot for that project. And I would like to make a request for staff and, and town council to visit um, the fact that P and Z's vote doesn't carry through and that they have a chance to overturn it. I mean, P and Z is, planning and zoning is what we do. The fact that we vote one way and it can get overturned by council, I think that's a non-normalcy in this business, no?
Okay, yeah, comment?
So actually, you are a recommending body.
Correct, because of that.
So you're not making the decision.
But I know there are P and Z's that. I know there are P and Z's vote that is a final.
Your vote is a recommendation from this body to council. They consider that, which is why it's great that you're now sharing why you voted a certain way, because sometimes that can make a difference to them when they're deliberating. Generally, you will see planning commission and council on the same pathway, but there've been a number of times in my career that that has not been the case. And it is council's prerogative, they are the elected officials, and they get to make that final decision.
And, uh, the only other reason, um, I would like to see, you know, projects still be on town and water sewer. If at all possible.
Commissioner Zamudio?
No, I feel that he fulfills obligation to, to the commission here. And his land, he's developing it properly, and I feel that it's, it'll, it'll fit right in, and it, I guarantee it will sell, I have no doubt in my mind.
So just to clarify, I'm asking each member to vote whether, to speak. Yeah, whether you voted yes or no, which I should have been more clear about that, so I apologize.
Mine's a yes.
Commissioner Matters?
Same as the last time. I don't feel that this should be one acres. I still feel it should be two acres to match the building on the west.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Alright, Vice Chair Passiak?
Soon as I get a number. Okay, um, just to comment on tying into sewer, the sewer is one point one one mile away. Last meeting, we were told it was three hundred dollars a foot to put in a sewer, so we're talking about one million, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars to run the sewer, which would kill this project. That's just a comment on the sewer. There are houses in the area next to the slaughterhouse. The slaughterhouse has been there for almost fifty years. So having the comment about odor and noise from the slaughterhouse, I think is adequate to address the concerns about noise and odor from the slaughterhouse. Uh, the property to the west is county. We're not in the county. We have no jurisdiction of what the county has for lot size. I think a one acre lot is, is appropriate for the area. And I hope that what gets built is a price point where people can afford to buy it.
Thank you. Commissioner? Penn, Commissioner Penn?
I drove out to the property and, uh, I voted yes, but I really would have liked to have seen.
Now speak into the mic better, please.
I would have liked to have seen a two acre minimum. And I, I've got reservations as to why somebody would spend three fifty, four hundred thousand dollars to live next to a slaughterhouse. And I'm hoping that the disclosures are strong enough that the people completely understand what they're purchasing next to. Hopefully it'll end up being, uh, a nice project for the area.
Thank you.
I believe it's gonna be a nice project. That's, looks good to me.
So, I voted yes because I thought this gentleman's basically delivered a project that we've been sending a unwritten message out for months and months. The slaughterhouse is not a concern in my opinion, from the fact that there's houses on two sides of it and it, it is out in the rural area, which we seemed bent on maintaining our rural farm and ranching lifestyle. I think it fits it perfectly. And the disclosures, it's there and it's pretty obvious it's there, so if somebody buys it and says they didn't know about it, then they just weren't doing their own due diligence on it. It meets all of the town landscaping and building and zoning codes at this point. Infrastructure is unrealistic for this number of lots to be hooked into town sewer and town water. Um, if that is going to be a criteria for any subdivision to be approved in this town, then we're gonna be pretty slow for a long time here. Um, there was a mention in the public comment about this project being capitalistic. I'm actually grateful that it is. Gentlemen's gotta make some money. It's our right as American citizens to do what we wish with our property within the bounds of the law. And it's also our right to make money doing it. And there is not one small tiny thing with a businessman making a reasonable profit on his product. And the market will decide whether it's overpriced or not built to where it's desirable to own. That would be a very strong comment on my part. That's why I voted yes for it. And I appreciate the commission explaining their votes. Thank you. So we're gonna go to item F and move to item F-one, which is the staff reports on prior cases to the town council. Pardon? Oh, you're correct, thank you. I saw my arrow, but I forgot what it was there for. So, do we get a approval to do an executive session or not?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so that means.
We need to end this session, correct, and then?
We will adjourn to an executive session, and then when we're done talking to the attorney, we'll come back and we will continue the rest of the meeting.
Any concept of how long that session might last?
I'm hoping no longer than twenty minutes.
Okay, all you folks sitting in the audience, if you choose to wait, fine. If not, we will forgive you for wanting to get the heck out of here. We're gonna move to executive session.
So now we'll go to item F1. Prayer cases to town council.
All right, Chair Commission, we did have two CP cases that went before town council last week. Both of them were for single-family residences in commercial light zoning. They were both approved.
Awesome.
And then we did have that text amendment for the flag lot. Joint use, and that was approved as well from the commission, or from the council. And then, as a result of that discussion, there will be a new text amendment that will be being presented to the commission following this upcoming cycle. So, text amendment on the agenda for next time.
And there was something about the general plan?
So, we are in, as you guys know, the review period. Our review period ends June 6th. If you have comments, there are forms you're supposed to fill out to list them. All of the comments that we receive will go to the steering committee, which was a body appointed by the council. They will vet every single comment that we get in during that review period, and they will make a recommendation to include it or not include it. Those recommendations will go to you, and you determine whether whether you agree with the steering committee on each of those things. And then you make a recommendation on the plan with all of those proposed changes to the council. Council will make the ultimate decision. We're looking at the last week in June, two special meetings. One for you, one for the council. Haven't confirmed that yet with council because they have budget the same meeting night. So we'll see if they have to have a special meeting, or if they have it at the same time. We are also looking at June 12th for a joint planning commission council meeting with the consultant team to talk through the last part of where we are at with the projects, to give you a heads up so that you're ready to manage the meeting when it comes before you at the end of June.
What date was that?
I think it's the 12th. I don't have my calendar in front of me. It should be on Monday.
Yes.
I will
What time?
Email you as soon as I know. It'll probably be another six o'clock meeting just because people work, so. I know.
I just had a question about they're changing all of our zoning descriptions.
No, those are general plan designations. The zoning is in the UDO. That's how you implement the general plan. The general plan designations are going to be changed, and you expect that every time you do a new general plan. Plus, ours are not good because it gives you, it doesn't let you have, so if you have 10 acres, you can't subdivide into two fives. You have to go to a two acre or less based on the current general plan. If you're rezoning, you cannot rezone to five acre minimum because the general plan says two acres or less for the majority of the town. So we current, the new general plan, the proposed general plan, has more designations to give us a narrower bandwidth to help staff and the community understand what can happen in certain places. And so it's a lot more discerning for us. I think it will be much more helpful.
Anything else? Anybody got questions about that? All right. So then we come to the next part, F2, the commission. Anybody on the commission have anything they would like to state or visit about, or anything like that? Okay, so it comes to the chairman portion of the meeting. And I have a few things that I thought would be interesting for education purposes. One of them is, which we've heard this information a couple of times now, about sewer piping business. I talked to a contractor who's done roadwork in this town. And his estimated costing on pipe, depending on a whole big giant list of circumstances that he had, was about 300 bucks a foot, which kind of tailed in line with what we heard. And then the town just released a bid, at least I believe it's released, a bid where just the 18-inch sewer main, no manholes, laterals, road patching, road cutting, traffic control, and all the other stuff that they add on there, it was let for $222 a foot just to dig and bury the pipe without any other ancillary stuff. So it's not unreasonable that the $300 a foot figure is accurate to a degree. And we already heard some mathematics done on that tonight for a project that we just looked at. And that's a significant dollar value for anybody to overcome, which needs to be taken into account on projects of certain places and certain sizes, on whether it's economically viable to do it, and whether it's worth the grief to fool with it. So that was that one thing. The other thing is, over the years I've been on this commission, I've heard things about having a second grocery store. And so, I took advantage of a person that I know in upper management for a grocery store that is not in Chino Valley at this point. What would it take to get a new grocery store built here? What's your simple priorities, just real caveman style without straining anybody too hard to come up with information? The items that came back to me were, is that one of the things they look at is the five-year plan for the town. It needs to show some growth. It didn't, there was no specific percentage or anything, but it had to have a positive five-year plan for growth pattern, showing an increasing population. One of the items that came up is what kind of store would be placed here? And the phrase marketplace store was brought up because in Chino Valley, that would have more opportunities to sell things like clothing, barbecues, lawn furniture, et cetera, that the bigger stores are putting in that are, go beyond just being a grocery store. To build that store, pre-China virus stupidity was estimated at $24 million to build that store. That number, I'm certain, has gone up because that information would be at least three years old at this point. To operate a store of that dollar value, minimum sales would have to be $800,000 per week, with a million dollars per week in sales for viable sustainability. If you use 16,000 people in Chino Valley for a criteria, which the town, I've heard estimates anywhere from 11,000 to 13,000. I picked 12 just because it was an even number. That amounts to approximately $62.50 per week, per person, for the million-dollar budget that they're trying to hit. Now that's per person, not family, not, not mom, that's mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, junior, his sister, and their cousins all have to buy $62.50 a week worth of groceries to sustain that. And if you multiply that times two for two grocery stores, that means that the population has to buy, per person of any age, $125 a week in groceries. So, that kind of sheds a little light on why we have one grocery store, and what it would take to draw in the second grocery store, which I thought was very interesting.
Very much so. You brought that up. You mind if I made a comment on that?
No, sir. Have at it.
It was just very strange. I was down south just this weekend, and Benson, Arizona, anybody been there? It's not much. You can blow through Benson in about 30 seconds. So their 2021 census is like 5,300 people. The average, and I looked this up because I was so blown away. The average occupied home value is $114,000. And they have a super Walmart.
Amazing, isn't it? And we have in this part of Yavapai County, three Walmarts. And so, how do they factor all this stuff in? I have no idea, but they
It was a pretty new one, and I was so surprised. What is a Walmart doing in Benson, Arizona? I couldn't believe they could.
But they are so big, they can sell things, hold the store open at a loss with the future development in mind, I guess. I know my business couldn't hold that up very long. So, I just thought that'd be interesting to throw that out there. So now we come to Yeah, that's
That's amazing.
That store's got to be way over 24 million to open one of them things up. So, I'm going to go to item F4, public. This is an opportunity for the public to stand and comment about things. Chokes you up, don't it? That are not on the agenda tonight. Would anybody from the public like to step up and speak? All right. No volunteers, so I'm moving to item G. Do I have a motion?
I motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commission, for your durability tonight. And town staff for your information.